Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. The city council work session will come to order and I see that Community Recreation and Events covers a lot of our city in a lot of different ways and why don't you review how that goes for us, Jason?
All right. Well, thank you very much for having me today. For the record, my name is Jason Sanchez. I'm the Director of Community Rec and Events. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the Community Rec and Events Fiscal Year 26 Budget Request. I also like to thank Mayor Collins for taking time to meet with each of the departments to hear our requests and for approving what he could. We understand this is a difficult process and so we appreciate that effort as well. I would also like to recognize and thank Robin Lockman and the accounting team for their hard work creating this professional document. Their hard work makes our job a lot easier when we're working on our budget presentations. So, thank you to them. With me today, I have Sam Payne, Deputy Director of our department, and each of our division managers. And I'll introduce them here in just a second, but I would like to start today by having you turn to page 11 in your city budget book while I bring up our flow chart. And you can see through the city budget book in the organizational chart how large and diverse our department is. And so I'm going to start today by showing our department flow chart. And I'd also like to introduce our managers at this time. So with us, we have Ignacio V. Hill, our aquatics manager. And if you guys would each stand up and just wave to him. Scott Aker, our Botanic Gardens Manager. Nathan Chapman, our cemetery manager. Chris Muggenberg, our technical director. Kalina Heil, our marketing and events director. Courtney Sanchez, our booking and marketing manager. Our clean and safe foreman, Tony Martinez, could not be here today, but Tony and Sam are here to represent our clean and safe team. Mark Allison, our city forester. Ron Cannard, our golf manager. Jeff Gelotti, our ice and events manager. Brandon Peterson, our parks manager. And his assistant, Jason Covisto. Brittany Hooper, our program and facilities manager. Andrew Ko, our recreation manager. Steven Trowbridge, our weed and pest manager. And Benny Medina, our CRE project manager. I asked each of them to join us today just in case there's a question that Sam and I couldn't answer. And I'd also like to thank them for the work they put into creating their division budgets. You see, each year, they meet with their staff to create new business models and strategic plans. This includes everything from improving and streamlined service delivery methods, staff training and team building, negotiating contracts and fee schedules, construction projects, assessing quality and quantity of programs and events, launching never tried marketing campaigns, and increasing pest control and data collection. I'm very proud of the CRE staff that despite many obstacles, worked diligently every day for the Cheyenne community with their can do spirit and perseverance. Our work extends beyond traditional business hours, including evenings and weekends to support a wide range of activities and events. From hosting concerts and cultural programs to maintaining facilities used daily by residents and visitors, our team ensures that parks, recreation centers, and event spaces are accessible and well-maintained year-round. We do this for a very passionate public. This talented group of over 375 employees comprised of full-time, part-time, and seasonal staff forms the backbone of our department. Whether maintaining parks and facilities, managing programs, or coordinating community events, every team member plays a vital role in delivering outstanding services to Cheyenne. This is a department where collaborative collaboration thrives, ideas are valued, and the shared passion for community drives success. Our team recognizes the critical role CRE plays in economic development, workforce growth, and youth retention. Their forward-thinking approach and unwavering commitment to excellence ensures that Cheyenne continues to grow as a vibrant, inclusive, and thriving community. And at this time, I'd like to share some of the accomplishments our team achieved in addition to our daily maintenance tasks. So on your screen, you will see that we completed a design for the new Johnson pool and it is ready for six penny consideration. We transformed the Aquatic Center parking lot islands as well as the islands in Lyons Park to more ziric and sustainable low-maintenance plants. We also replaced some of the landscaping at the Aquatic Center with synthetic turf. You see that picture on your lower right. We installed a new tree sculpture at the Botanic Gardens, updated the orchid display with a new custom arbor for the vanilla orchid. We updated the wooden shade structure at the Children's Village, constructed a hail protection structure and concrete at the Botanic Gardens, and removed and repoured the greenhouse concrete flooring. We completed the installation of the new irrigation system at Lakeview and Bethel Cemeteries, replaced asphalt surfaces through both cemeteries, and installed QR codes to provide public access to the cemetery information management system. We removed the Masonite flooring, then sanded and restained the existing hardwood floor at the Civic Center. We upgraded the stage fire curtain to meet city code. We replaced the outdated rope and knife system with a more modern wire and release box. We also updated all of the lighting to LED lighting through the Civic Center with assistance from facility maintenance. We renovated the Cheyenne Depot Museum, both the exterior patio, a cafe, the restrooms. We did some brickwork out front and added lighting, and we'll be happy to share that ribbon cutting tomorrow at 1:30 with the community. We also installed fluid-applied flooring in the Ops Building. We installed exterior LED lighting and an audio system at the Ops Building. We constructed and installed bleachers on all nine fields at Cheyenne Junior League, and we replaced the synthetic turf at Pioneer Park. We completed the North Lyons Park Concrete Road Project near the Quanis Community House. We upgraded some new concrete work and gates at North Park. We repaired a drainage system in the College Drive Tunnel to help prevent flooding. And we repaired the irrigation system on Carey Avenue between 15th Street and Lincoln Way. We installed new emergency call stations in the Spiker Garage, installed 14 AD units across CRE facilities. And with the help of our CRE project manager, we painted all of our parking lots. And I'll just mention that Benny originally reached out and received some quotes to have our parking lots painted. North Park alone would have cost $14,000 to have a contractor do it. So Benny just said, hey, if you buy the paint and a painter, I'll get them all done. And he did that last spring, and now we're just doing touch-ups as we go. We installed new LED lighting at the skate park and at Holiday Park tennis courts. We updated the landscape at Robert Burns statue. We installed new trash cans through the downtown area. We installed a gate on the fourth floor of the Spiker parking garage. We renovated the Spiker Garage restrooms. And just this last week, we completed lowering 190 lights in the Spiker Garage to improve lighting. And so you could see the before and after between the lower left and the lower right pictures. There is a noticeable difference from that project. We worked with the state to install a security fence between the Governor's Mansion and the fourth hole at Airport Golf Course. We installed new concrete paths from 13 Green to 15 T at Airport with the help of Ward 2. We installed new concrete from the clubhouse to 9 Green and from the clubhouse around 1T at Prairie View with the help of Ward 3. We are in the process of installing a safety fence along hole number eight. We're just waiting for the fabric to arrive to complete that project. We installed a new cooling tower at the Ice and Events Center. We put in a new playground at Saddle Ridge Park. We demoed the old concession and restroom facility at Dutcher with the help of Street and Alley. And we are in the process of building a new facility as we speak. We installed concrete sidewalks along all of Lincoln Park. We removed and replaced the hardwood floor in the Quanis Community House. And again, on the exterior restrooms, we applied a fluid-applied flooring. We built a new gymnastics facility. We held a ribbon cutting and got all the new equipment in the building. We acquired the new Beast facility and programmed that utilizing every available hour that we could, that we can. It's amazing how much we've been able to improve our programming by owning a facility of that size. We worked with the school district to add a concrete walkway from the parking lot from Buffalo Ridge School to access the Beast. And we also installed dividing curtains in the building. We introduced the Teen Youth Night. We added or included ages 12 to 15. And this was at the Romero Park. So we did that twice this year. Mr. Jim's Pizza donated pizza for the event and Pepsi donated soda and water, but we had over 50 kids attend these events. We had arcade games, dodgeball, volleyball. The police came and played basketball, but it's just something new and fun for the kids on the South Side to come and experience the venues and to build some camaraderie. We hosted the Wyoming Parks and Rec Association Conference. It's an annual conference, and we had the largest number of people turn out this year. And so, great job to our team for hosting the state conference. We completed master plans for the Botanic Gardens, our Park and Rec Master Plan, and Rotary Park Master Plan, as well as develop a conceptual plan for Freedom Point and Lyons Park. So what's next? We're going to replace the infield lighting at Dutcher North and South. We already have the bids. We're just holding off on doing the work so this, until the season concludes so that we don't interrupt play. We're replacing the boiler at the Aquatic Center. Again, that project is currently out to bid, but should be completed by, probably by July. We're going to replace and upgrade the restrooms, concessionary, and backstop fencing at Dunbar Field. That's the softball field in Lyons Park. We're replacing the playground equipment and safety surfacing at Optimus Park. That should be finished here in the next few weeks. We'll complete Phase 2 of the Depot renovation. We'll install the safety fence at Prairie View Golf Course. We're improving the drainage at North Cheyenne Community Park. We're going to remove and replace the concrete paths on the southeast corner of Lyons Park. We're going to work to construct Freedom Point in Lyons Park. We would like to paint the interior of the Spiker Garage. We will collaborate with the state on arboretum projects, including the greenhouse, head house, and lath house. And we will work with the county to build a new storage and office space for the Weed and Pest Control Division. So then we have projects that we have in the current budget that are one-time funds. And in those, we have a grapple truck for our urban forestry. The current truck we have is a 2010 Peterbilt cab. We, that truck currently has about 5,200 hours on it, and it just has met the end of its lifespan, but it's about a $350,000 vehicle that we just don't have in our budget. But it's a critical piece. Every time we have these major storms or a tree fall in the street, that's the unit we use to retrieve those and can get traffic flowing again. We're also asking for $45,000 to update the shell lighting at the Civic Center. This is the shell that surrounds the symphony when they play. We currently have incandescent lighting and it gets pretty hot under there, and so by changing to LED, we'll not only save electricity, but we'll make it more pleasant for all of the musicians to play. We are asking for $42,000 to replace the carpet at the Ice and Events Center. We've done numerous updates and modifications at that facility, and some of the last things are the carpet. It's the original carpet there, and it has just met the end of its life. And we are asking for support to add lighting to the last two fields at Dutcher. So this would make four fields that we lie at Dutcher. And again, our, our goal has been to maximize the use of all of our facilities before we add more to our inventory. So this will give us an opportunity to utilize those fields in the evening and reduce the, the amount of requests we have to turn down because we can't accommodate. And our challenge is, over the next year, we would like to identify a funding mechanism for repairs and replacement of city-owned parking lots. All the facilities that we oversee have parking lots in, but we don't have a mechanism to improve some of the asphalt. And that we would like to secure a full-time sponsorship position. A lot of the events that we host, where we are, we rely on sponsors such as Fridays on the Plaza, Super Day. All of the teams that you see in, in uniform for our rec programs, we get sponsors for all of those shirts and to run those programs. And so, it takes a lot of time and we need somebody that is dedicated to investing that time so that we can keep offering those programs at a low rate. We also have facilities that we could market and advertise and have some, you know, naming rights, things like that, that we haven't been able to pursue. And so I feel like we're, we're leaving money on the table by not having someone tackle that. Before we start with our budget presentation, I just wanted to say thank you to our accounting team, our legal team, and to you and the mayor, because with your support, we've been able to accomplish all the projects that we just listed. It is a team effort. It takes more than just our department to pull this off. And so, thank you to all of those folks for their help and support. And now, we will turn to page 144 in your book. And Mr. Chair, I will leave it to you at your discretion if you want to ask questions as we go, or if you want us to try to get through as many divisions as we can in the time allotted.
I think we better move along. You've got a lot to cover and but if there's something, somebody really wants to touch on, they can go ahead and ask to be recognized.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and start on page 144, and that's our administration budget. The overall for this, our division, we are decreasing our budget by $19,527. Some areas where we had increase would be in our overtime and we, we will get some, we'll have less revenue from our Lotto proceeds this year. That's what we're forecasting. So that's, in a nutshell, what that budget looks like. Next page is our urban forestry division. Same thing. There's a decrease of $45,716 in this budget. We had, we reduced the $77,000 we had for one-time funds for tree removals, and instead, we're asking for support to buy that grapple truck. We are looking to have our, two of our seasonal employees year-round. And so that's the increase in our part-time temporary. Otherwise, we have a slight increase in maintenance supplies. On page 148 is our program and facilities division, and this budget also decreased $9,000. We did remove $10,000 that we were allotted last year for our conference, but otherwise, the only noticeable difference or notable difference would be in overtime. And again, this is part of the time and lieu where we're paying people for the actual hours they work. Our aquatics division decreased their budget by $13,000. I'll tell you that the guys went out this last week while the weather was nice and they resealed Johnson Pool and repainted it. It is a 71-year-old pool shell though. And, and what I want to make sure everyone is aware is that we're doing all we can to keep it operational for the summer, but if it is leaking, we may have to go ahead and put the pool to bed. On page 152 is our recreation division. And we have a slight increase in, in our budget on, in this division. You'll see in the temporary part-time, it says $17,000, but if you look at the two lines under it, we, we basically just combined those two and made one line. So we removed the temporary part-time activities and the Pioneer Park supervisor and just put them all under the temporary part-time. We have a slight increase in our telecommunications and in our fleet fuel and labor. On page 154 is our rec buildings, and there, that budget increased $16,000. We have, our largest increase is in gas and electric, and that was a $13,000 increase based on what our costs were this year. And then a slight increase in our maintenance supplies. Again, with everything going up in the world, we, we have a about a 3% cost of living increase. Our golf division, we have an increase of $45,000 in that division. A lot, again, goes back to the time and lieu, the overtime. Health insurance had a big increase in that division, $33,000. But the rest of this is inflation, so for parts. And, and just so everybody is aware that our small engine shop is also combined with the golf budget. So it's not just the golf employees, it's the small engine shop. So our tires, our oil and grease, all of the parts and the equipment we purchased to maintain the city's small fleet. And on page 158 is our parks division. We have a decrease of $32,000. And we just had an excess of funds in our regular employee line from last year. I don't know how we made that error, but there was an excess of funds. I wish we could keep it, but we want to do right by the governing body. We do have an increase in our temporary part-time of $20,000. And that is because we, last year, were asked if we could use one of our employees to maintain the city-building landscape in civic commons. And so we hired Steven. And if you look at the screen, that's our friend Steven. And so Steven is back, but we do have to absorb the cost for his work. Like I said, we took an employee out of the park and brought him over here. And so we need that labor allocation back into the park. And then, if you turn to page 160, we're at our cemetery division. There is a budget increase of $10,000 here. $5,000 is our temporary part-time, and then $4,000 is in overtime. Page 162 is our Botanic Gardens. We have an increase of $37,000 in our Botanic Gardens, but $35,000 was health insurance. So of the 37, 35 is health insurance. We did increase our overtime again for the time and lieu. Page 164 is our clean and safe division. This budget increased $45,000 from last year. Health insurance alone was $15,000 of that, and overtime was five. So 20,000 of the 45 was just in health insurance and time and lieu. We did have an increase in our gas and electric based on the actual cost of $11,000. So the majority of that increase are those three GLs. Okay. Now if we turn to page 182, this is our weed and pest budget. And our major increase there would be in our regular employees and our part-time employees. But if you look down at our professional services, we went from 170,000 down to 65,000, so we reduced it 105,000. And the reason why is because over the last three years, Steven Trowbridge has done a fantastic job managing this division. And we are relying more on, on our staff than contractors. There's a lot better accountability. We have a better return on investment. So we're doing this work in-house versus contracting it out. So that's why there's a difference in the seasonal and regular employee GLs versus the professional service GL. Okay, on page 192 is our recreation fund. So these are the 04 teens. Just a quick history because there are many pages of 04 teens here. So we have like our adult softball, adult basketball, youth tee ball, youth tackle football, the gymnastics program, the rec camp latchkey program. All of these programs are self-sufficient. So our gymnastics, the revenue we generate from gymnastics pays for all of the wages for the gymnastics staff. For our rec camp latchkey, all of the revenue generated from that program pays for that program. So we evaluate all of our programs in this fund, and they either have to break even or make money, or we, we have to let the program go or increase fees. So all these programs under the 04 teen are self-sufficient programs. Again, there are numerous pages of GLs in there, and so, again, the revenue covers the expense. Okay, if we turn to page 227, this is our our 1% fund. So we have one employee for our Parks Right of Way funded from this, from our fifth penny, and we have two forestry employees. The rest of it goes, the 272,000 is the money we use to purchase equipment for the 12 divisions you see behind us. And so again, the $350,000 grapple would far exceed what we have available for equipment for this entire year for the whole department. Next page would be 231. This is our Botanic O&M. And if you recall, in 2012, when we built the Botanic Gardens, we put $2 million in that ballot for ongoing operations and maintenance. And so we do have a couple of employees that are funded out of that, as well as some of our seasonal employees. The rest goes toward maintenance, supplies, and equipment that we need for the Botanic Garden. On page 234 is our greenway O&M. So we have three full-time employees managing over 46 miles of greenway. All the tunnels, bridges, lights, all the dog pot dispensers, the litter control, they do a phenomenal job with three people to maintain one of Cheyenne's most popular assets. We are at the mercy of the six penny though, because all of the maintenance is funded through the six penny. And so we hope to have support on the next six penny to continue with that O&M. On page 237 is our golf improvement fund. So a portion of the green fees that we collect go to this fund, and that's what we use to purchase all of the golf equipment. So about a month ago, we purchased a rough mower. These funds are what we use to purchase those pieces of equipment and to build a, a fund for like tee box renovation, things of that nature. And Ron does a fantastic job of building this fund and utilizing it for improvements. On page 252 is our civic center fund, our enterprise funds. And again, our thought process here is that we try to do about a third of our shows are rentals. A third are co-promotions, and then a third are presents. With rentals, it's guaranteed a revenue, but it's a small amount of revenue. When we present a show, it's a higher risk, meaning it could cost more, but we have the potential to earn more. With a co-promotion, we split the risk. If we were too heavy one direction or another, we could have major losses or very little gains. 25% of the year, the civic center staff is at the Plaza hosting Fridays on the Plaza. So when you see the budget and you see what, if we're at about a 75% cost recovery, that's about right, because what we've, what we've learned over time is that everyone's ready to get outside this time of year. And so ticket sales seem to drop or tend to drop during the summer months. So doing the Fridays on the Plaza is an economic stimulator. You know, according to Visit Cheyenne, we're generating over one and a half million dollars economic impact to the community. We have 26 food trucks participating. We have numerous 501(c)(3)'s, the nonprofits. All the downtown businesses are better off because of the crowds we're bringing for this Fridays on the Plaza. And so, when you see the, the profit loss on the Civic Center, you have to take into account that we're deliberately putting on another event for a quarter of the year. The other part with the Civic Center that's often hard to communicate is that the revenue we generate from tickets is one thing, but there's also people that travel into Cheyenne to come to these shows. So they're going out to eat. A lot of people will do that before attending a show. They'll go to a brewery, a bar, an eatery. And if they're traveling, oftentimes they will stay at a hotel. So, so those are some of the hidden finances that, that I can't give a pinpoint number on, but I, I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that, that that's part of the revenue generation from the Civic Center. Okay, and on page 257, or 256 is our Ice and Events Center Fund. Again, same thing. Jeff has done an amazing job over the years transforming this into a destination spot for families. The amount of birthday parties we're hosting every weekend is just incredible. It's not uncommon to have five to seven birthday parties, while we also have other events in the facility. The miniature golf course is in immaculate shape. The large events that we host during the summer help to offset the cost for the electricity during the winter. We have a great ice program. We make great ice. Our relationship with the Capitals, I feel is, has improved tremendously over the last few years. I, I often hear the question, can we have year-round ice? And the, the answer is yes, but it's going to cost a lot more money than what we currently can afford, and then our revenues drop because of the cost of the electricity. And so the balance that we have with running the events we do during the summer, as well as the birthday parties and the miniature golf, helped to offset the, the expenses in the facility. Last year, I think we were $27,000 shy of a break even, which for a public facility is really good. We're able to keep our prices down and still get close to a break even. I did not think it would go that quick. So I will go ahead though and open up for questions.
Thank you. I'm very impressed. I'm sure the rest of us are. So shall we begin with the questions here on the dais? Mr. Escobell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you and Director. When you said that the lottery funds, it went down. I'm probably thinking that it's because more people are going historic horse racing instead of playing the lottery. But I guess, give me an idea of all these projects that you mentioned that were paid for with lottery funds.
Mr. Chair, through you. With the lottery funds, we were able to use some of those to build the pickleball court in Lyons Park, the bleachers at Cheyenne Junior League, some of the gymnastics equipment that we recently received, the lights at the skate park, the lights at Holiday Park. I think, I'd have to, those are some of them. There are more, but I could get you that exact breakdown of what we've used the funds for. There are more, but I I could get you that exact breakdown of what we've used the funds for.
Okay, and then on the parking lot. You have any idea about what you would use for our funding stream for that asphalt program?
Mr. Chair through you, I do not. I I don't know of a funding mechanism or a way that could generate a funding mechanism that could generate the revenue needed to do the improvements to all of the parking lots that we have. You know, if you look at Cheyenne Junior League, Dutch or Brim or Converse, North Park, Cahill, Lions Park, Holiday Park, these are all public facilities, Romero Park, but all of the asphalt is failing.
And I'm thinking that with historic horse racing percentages going up, that maybe doing an earmark similar to what we do with lottery funds for an asphalt program might be something that we could look at. One thing I didn't see in the budget was funding for a new 18-hole golf course. But I will say that it's difficult to get in a round of 18 holes on a weekend here. It's not uncommon to have three foursomes on one hole. So the pressure on our existing golf courses has to be immense. The one thing that I constantly hear from people out there is that the the need for having another golf course in this community. Then also I did hear that the sprinkler system out there at the airport golf course is probably within four or five years of needing replacing.
Mr. Chair through you, I'll address the irrigation question first. That is not correct. That irrigation system we installed a little over 20 years ago. And the team that installed it, Niebergolf, did an amazing job and our team has just been on it. There are no mainline breaks. We have very few breaks. So I'm not sure where that came from, but I don't see us needing to replace that irrigation system for a while. In regard to building more golf courses, I think we have to do a a study to see is it sustainable? Is the, do we have the number of residents or people traveling to play golf? Because it's quite the investment to develop a golf course, to build it, and then we have to staff it. I don't disagree that there are times where it is congested. And I think that's where we, you know, again, we we raise our rates this year. And currently we are up 15% over last year at this time in revenues. And so I don't think we've priced ourselves out of the market. I think we are right where we should be. But it's it's a popular game in our team. Again, I I think they do a fantastic job. We have great golf courses in Cheyenne. Our putting greens are some of the best at both courses, Airport and Prairie View. If they happen to ever move the compost facility, perhaps we could stretch and build additional holes over there for Prairie View. But really, I don't know that it's sustainable in Cheyenne. It sounds good. I just think we would need to conduct a study to make sure it's the prudent move.
Yeah, 27 holes for a community this size, you know, when you compare it to other communities our size doesn't measure up. But yeah, they're they're in good shape considering how much pressure they're under. The only other thing I'm hearing a lot of is that the tee boxes are sort of, they're not flat. They're they're mounded and hopefully we can get some work done on those. I guess that's about all I have because you you have a full plate, definitely. And we really appreciate everything everybody here with CRE does. It's an amazing trip tribute to this community. Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich?
Chairman Labor through you. If you turn, I'm going to start on page 146. I just had a question about the total number of employees that we have at Urban Forestry right now.
Hold on, let me bring up our flow chart from the beginning. If you want to ask a question?
Okay, that that is that question for that page. The next question I have is on page 149. I show that you had budgeted $10,000 for the, I believe you said the you were cutting professional services by $10,000 because you had budgeted that for the 2024 state meeting, the Recreation and Parks Association Conference. I'm just wondering where we would see the revenue from that? Because I'm guessing you charged registration fees.
Mr. Chair through you. So the Wyoming Parks and Rec Association collected the registration fees. We were the host city. So every city, as this conference moves down, hosts the conference. We do not collect revenue.
So it's in anticipation from that association that every city contribute $10,000 every time they host?
Mr. Chair through you, I'm going to turn to Brittany.
She did not. It was more of a donation.
Can she come to the microphone, please?
So every city takes turns every 10 years and then we host it. And then that was a donation from the city to help us host it.
Okay, thank you. Then I was curious when you talked about, for instance, on recreation, the overtime of increase from $3,000 in 2025 to now $10,000. And so it's an increase of $7,000. And I'm wondering if there is a way to perhaps schedule employees so that we're not in a situation where we're having to pay overtime?
Mr. Chair through you, we try to be creative in our work week. Our work week actually starts on Thursday and ends on Wednesday because we often work weekends. But during the summer months, it's it's not uncommon for us to be out there six, seven days without adding staff. This is the most efficient way for us to to manage.
Then Chairman Labor through you on page 157. I see that we used to have a line for vandalism expense. And I know at one time that was all moved into one area where the treasurer was collecting that information. I'm just wondering if you can direct us to the line item in the budget where vandalism now is being recorded?
Mr. Chair through you, it'll still be in that line, but we don't budget for it. We reappropriate at the end of the fiscal year based on what the vandalism was. It's so hard to project what we spend in vandalism. So throughout all of our departments, divisions, we just reappropriate at the end of the year based on what we incurred.
Okay. And then on page 193. I show on under Birthday, Rec Birthday Parties, I guess it's one page 192. The Birthday Parties show $16,000 in the 2025, nothing for 2026. So, but you said that was one of your major events. So I'm just wondering. Is that because, and I show it dropped from 28,903 in 2024 to 16,000 in the 2025. So just wondering where that is showing that it's breaking even or why it's not budgeted for?
Okay, Mr. Chair through you. So the Birthday Parties that we were discussing was at the Ice and Event Center. And so this one, Rec Birthday Parties, let me try to find which GL that moved into. Okay. Dr. Aldrich, can I get you and respond with an answer to you on that one?
Then on page 231, under Spot Optional Taxes. You mentioned that we are still, we still have two employees who are paying out of the spot tax. I, if I remember correctly, I thought we had really worked hard to try and move employees out of spot tax. Or were these additional employees that, because I remember that we did remove some out of the spot tax funds?
Mr. Chair through you, that you are correct. We had moved, I don't know the exact number. I want to say four employees in 2020, 2021 into the spot tax because we had a reduction of force at that time and this was a way to keep our staff. And so the following year, we did move two of them back out. But these positions have been in the spot tax and so they're not in new positions.
Since its inception?
Since its inception.
And then my last question was about on 237 under Golf Improvement Capital Fund. You show landscaping dropping $25,000 on page 237. And I'm just wondering, did we finish a project? Or why would we be needing $25,000 less in landscaping supplies than what we had used previously?
Mr. Chair through you, we have some equipment needs coming up. And so if you look at the line above it, I added some funding into there and reduced from the landscaping supplies.
Okay, thank you.
And then to your question on forestry, you asked about the number of employees. We have eight?
I think so.
I would just say Chairman Labor through you, thank you for what you guys do. I I quite honestly, an amazing amount of work that gets done by your department and achievements. So kudos to all of you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a similar question over the employees in the O and M Fund for for the Botanic Gardens because I thought we'd taken all of them out of there at one point. But apparently we have not.
No, we haven't.
Robin, do you happen, do you have, what do we have left in that fund?
I think it's 1.7.
Mr. Chairman through you, Jason says 1.7, but I can verify that number for you.
Okay, but so 12 years later, we've actually lost, reduced it by 300,000 from where we started. So that's encouraging.
And Mr. Chairman, there, we also put some of the overage money into that. So we added money to it.
All right, thank you. Find all my other questions here. Mr. Chairman for Director Sanchez, if we've reduced the professional services for tree removal by $70,000 because we needed that money elsewhere, is the tree removal program not as, obviously it's going to be severely restricted this year? What are we participating with that?
Mr. Chair through you, you are correct. So Mark and his team are trying to treat as many trees right now as we can to extend the life. I will tell you that, again, you've heard this so many times, but a lot of our tree canopy is reaching their their age limit. They're dying out. We've also had some spruce hips beetle. We've had, you know, just drought conditions. And so there are still some trees that need to come down. We're going to be doing those in-house, but it will be a lot fewer than what we've seen over the last couple of years. And always focusing on safety or risk hazards first.
Okay, and then Mr. Chairman, my last question, going back to the Civic Center Fund and just to make sure I understand it, so revenue from reserves is like 92.5,000. And the reason again for that is because you guys are doing Fridays on the Plaza and obviously we don't charge anything for that, so.
Mr. Chair through you, that's a a large reason why. It's hard to predict what show will sell. We do all of our research and a show can do really well in a venue, similar size, ticket prices. And then it might not. So it's a gamble, but we try to do our due diligence in who we're pursuing and and in lowering our subsidy. I could tell you it's difficult that from day one, we have to come up with our, we have an automatic loss.
What do we call that?
Depreciation, now both buildings, you know, at the Ice and Events. So immediately we have $125,000 of depreciation at both facilities.
Mr. Chairman, then to follow up on that and perhaps Director Sanchez or Treasurer Lockman knows. So that 92.5,000, do we have, what do we budget out of the city? I know for Fridays on the Plaza, I know a lot of that's paid for by sponsors. But essentially, how much of that 92,000 is for Fridays on the Plaza?
Mr. Chair through you, I I don't know that I understand the question completely. I know the city does contribute $55,000 for us to book act.
So $92,000 coming out of reserves. And some of the reason for that is because that your department or the Civic Center is doing Fridays on the Plaza also and we don't charge for that or get any revenue from it other than from sponsors, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think that you're the $92,000 is the difference. You're looking in the wrong column.
Okay.
So go to the one before it, it's 244,499. And that's just kind of a placeholder until the, at the end of the year, the governing body has been gracious enough to provide the Civic Center, Ice and Event Center, and Fridays on the Plaza with the money that's left over from CRA's general fund budget. And so we kind of just hold that until that decision's made. I don't know if you recall that or not.
Thank you for the correction, Treasurer. You're right. So then the increase of the 92,000 is just because we're speculating on and shows either either Fridays on the Plaza or, as you said, we just don't know how shows will go to the end of the year.
Mr. Chair through you, that is correct.
Okay, all right. That's not for, since I've been around here a really long time. I mean, that's been a fairly consistent number. I can remember years ago, we generally planned a $250,000 from reserves for the for the Civic Center. So that's kind of been the trend over the years. We've managed that. So like I said, this is pretty much in line with what we've always experienced there.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to mention that I think you're, the 120,000 is what's transferred from reserves, from general fund above. That's the amount that it's been every year for a long time.
So if I look at the last line, it just says revenue.
That's just, that's just like a placeholder.
Revenue from reserves, which I assumed is a transfer.
It's revenue, no, revenue from reserves is from Civic Center's reserves. But this is, like I said, we don't know that the number that's going to be transferred from the general fund to add to the 120 until next summer, until the summer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Remmels?
Mr. Chairman, Director Sanchez, on page 150, can you tell me about the ultraviolet system maintenance?
Mr. Chair through you, so we have a UV system that we have at the splash pad and we also have at the Aquatic Center. So those, what would the question be? I could explain the costs or?
What is it? What does it do?
So we have to replace some of our UV lighting and it's, I don't know, what about? About 7,000? Go ahead and start.
So the the UV system helps with, in addition to like the chlorine. So it's to sanitize the water at both locations. It's a, it's a newer system, new technology and it works very well.
And Mr. Chair through you, our division manager said we spent about $5,000 to $7,000 at each.
Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you. That's what I was trying to figure out if it was for sanitation. And then I had another question on page 156. These seem like little numbers I'm asking about, but I'm just trying to get a better understanding. The the rental for the portable restrooms at the golf course, is that just a temporary thing while we were building something else? Or how does?
Mr. Chair through you, a lot of these, that expense is at Prairie View Golf Course. We don't have plumbing in the middle of the course. We have porta-potties around hole number five. And so that's all year long. The cost to pull a sewer line and a water line to that area far exceeds the rental fees that we pay.
Mr. Chair, one more question. What is your total budget that you oversee, Jason?
Mr. Chair through you, I think with all of our accounts, a little over $18 million. And then depending on what is approved for bud, our projects, it could be from a few million to quite a few million.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing is I just want to thank you all for everything you do also. I was at the pickleball courts on Sunday and it was so nice driving through the park and seeing so many people in that park enjoying the day. And everything looked beautiful. Pickleball courts are amazing. So I I think it's such an important economic impact that what what you all do. It's not just for fun. It makes a huge impact for recruiting businesses and keeping businesses and keeping people in the community. So thank you all for everything you do.
Mr. Chairman through you, I think they've asked all the line item questions, so I get to ask the easy questions.
All right.
Tell us the, a little more about the impact of the Beast Facility and what it's done for your, not only your athletic Tell us a little more about the impact of the Beast Facility and what it's done for your, not only your athletic, but your, all of your recreation programs and where you're going with that, if you could.
Mr. Chair through you, I'll do my best to keep this short. But you know the struggles we had. We were, you know, we were reliant on so many different schools to run our programs. Adults, the adult basketball, adult volleyball and all the youth programs. And we were, you know, sometimes at a moment's notice, we'd be notified that there is a PTO meeting and so we couldn't use the gym that night. And so when you displace 100 kids within a few hours and you're trying to make all of that contact communication with the parents to let them know, it was, it was difficult. And so to have our own facility where we could build our schedules, it keeps all the refs in one area. The parents, actually, it's really cool to see because all the different kids from different schools are all in one building. So you hear parents cheering for the sport and the kids, not just their individual team. And it's just cool to see that transition. We try to utilize that building to its fullest capacity all the time. I can tell you, we have pickleball players there in the morning. We've got some different academies there during the day. We have drop-in as often as possible. In the evening during our youth basketball program and youth volleyball season, it was not uncommon for us to have 200 to 300 people in that facility every night. I'm sure the neighbors are like, hey, you know, it's a lot. And so that's where we worked with the school district to try to build a sidewalk and utilize their parking lot at Buffalo Ridge. And they were accommodating to that. But I could tell you, it's transformed what we've been able to do. Our programs have grown so much that we're back asking the school district to use a couple of gyms because we're at capacity. We have exceeded our current facility, but it's a good problem. It's a great thing. It's a nice facility. It's well-maintained. I don't know if Andrew wants to add anything to that, but I could tell you that we try to use it as much as possible. We had a karate tournament there, a couple hundred people in the building. We utilized it for the tacos and tequila for the Camilla shelter. Over 600 people in it that night. And so it's a great asset to the community.
Last Thursday, Cheyenne Leeds had a small informational situation for the electeds. And a handful of us attended that. And Betsy made the comment that many of the people they work with are amazed that we do not have a recreation center in this community. I feel like we're slowly patchwork, piecing together the effect of a rec center. But when our economic development people hear that from the businesses that are looking at our community, it's alarming to me. And it's not for lack of trying. I mean, we've tried. Maybe we need to try again. I'm, as much as Councilman Escabel wants another 18-hole golf course, I'm very, very, very interested in an indoor practice facility. I envision it being at North Park, but it could be anywhere. I think our athletes need, based upon our weather, I think our athletes need that. You know, they compete up and down the front range all over Wyoming. I'm not sure we're giving them the training and the time that they need to compete in those types of activities. So that's something I want to continue pursuing. All of you, whether you realize it or not, are ambassadors. People come to this community and see all the work that you do. And many, many years ago, probably close to 25 years ago now, when the site selectors for the Lowe's Distribution Center were considering Cheyenne, it was our greenway that impressed them, sparked them, gave them that additional interest. So as you go about your day to day and do all the wonderful things that you do, you really don't know who you're impacting and impressing and, but you are. You lead the charge and you're to be committed for that and you have great management. We all love Jason. I think as a group, we'll do whatever we can to help you, so keep it up. I almost made a smart aleck comment when he listed all the projects that you'd completed. I said, well, I wonder what they did in the afternoon. I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Very, very impressive, so thank you. I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I think the majority of us really, really appreciate everything you do, so thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Jason, I just wanted to say to you and to your staff, you know, you recite the list of accomplishments that all the divisions have been able to complete over the past years. And it's just, I mean, you just shake your head and wonder, how did these folks get that much stuff done? It's a credit to you and your team and I know how hard that you all work. I, you know, I volunteered sometimes at Fridays on the Plaza. I know how late. I know when you start setting up. I know how late you are there tearing down. And then oftentimes, you're all up just all the earlier the next morning to set up for the next event during summertime. So no rest for the weary, certainly with where your crew is considered. And I've never had a negative interaction with any of your staff, whether it be the front desk folks at the Aquatic Center, the Civic Center staff, golf staff, Ison Events. Everyone's always been so friendly and accommodating. And it's just, it's just really remarkable. It's a well-run department and just want to thank all of you because as Councilman Seagrave said, you are all ambassadors. And so when folks or businesses, organizations are looking at our city, they're going to look at, often at some of the services and programs that are provided by community recreation and events. And that's important. It's important to our community. It's important to businesses who invest in the community, so thank you all.
Any further questions? Well, we're just about exactly at 1:00 and that's pretty good. I do want to join in the compliments that have been expressed here this morning. And I hope that all of you, when you go back and talk to your staff, let them know that as individual employees, we recognize and understand the effort they make. It's, the facilities I use, and I guess we all have our own different preferences, really are top quality. And I did want to mention that you didn't talk much about the Kewanis and Rotary Park, which are upcoming major efforts. So I think we can be confident that we'll be able to deal with them. And because the attention to detail here is what makes the difference. So thanks to everyone. I think that concludes our meeting.
Mr. Chair. Just want to say thank you again for the opportunity to present and to say thanks again to the staff. I want to join you in that, in thanking them for all that they do. It's a lot, the projects, you know, it's on top of their daily maintenance and so thank you all.